Where am I? Okay, she's back. I will call the August 11, 2008 meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would the secretary call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnhardt?
Here.
Ms. Pease?
Here.
Mr. Frederick?
Here.
Mr. Josephson?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Eishem?
Here.
Mr. Palmer? Mr. Wang?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Did you call me? Oh, well, I didn't answer. Well, I'm here. I'm here. Okay, the next, before we get any farther on our agenda, I would like to propose some serious agenda changes for tonight, and I'm looking to Mr. Eishem to make the motion. I'd like to move the cases that are G1, 2, and 3 up under Old Business, to be E1, 2, and 3. Those should have been the first items under Old Business, as those were public hearing items that were carried over from last week. And then to have the, what is currently E1 and 2, become items E4 and 5.
Madam Chair, I move that we take the public hearing items, items G1, 2, and 3, and move them to E under Unfinished Business, and that items E1 and 2 then become items E4 and 5.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any objection? Hearing none, that agenda order has been changed. So everything, what that means is everything has been moved under item E, Unfinished Business, and cases G1, 2, and 3 now become cases E1, 2, and 3. So now, Mr. Eishem, would you handle disclosures, please?
Mr. Earnhardt, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
None.
Thank you. Ms. Pease?
None.
And Mr. Frederick?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Josephson?
None.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
Yes, I will be abstaining from item D1, that resolution, because I was excused from that case. I was previously excused from what are now cases E2 and 3, the petitions by AWU.
That's correct. So you'll leave the room on those, and then on the consent agenda, you'll just abstain.
I'll just abstain from that action.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Phelps?
No.
And Mr. Wang?
Only that I was previously excused from participation in case number 2008-09-5, the Eagle River Long Range Transportation Plan, and won't be participating in that tonight.
Okay, thank you. And I have nothing to disclose.
Thank you, Mr. Eishem. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, move for the approval of items D1A, case number 2008-049.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Pease. I see you on the board. Thank you for, I see that you actually had been a mover. Okay. Any corrections or changes? And let's try to use our little request-to-speak buttons. Any corrections or changes?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have one correction on page 3.
And maybe you could note that, Mr. Eishem, I gave away my resolution to another commissioner.
Very minor. Item 9, the middle of the paragraph, it says, it's talking about the commission's comments. "It is disappointing to see parking," comma, "but with the landscaping, great changes," and so on. I think what we said was, "It's disappointing to see such a large expanse of parking." I don't want us to be branded as that extreme.
Ms. Pease, where was that again? On which page?
Page 3 of the resolution.
Okay.
Item 9.
Okay.
Moving down to about the middle.
Uh huh.
The sentence starts, or the line starts, "neighboring community as possible," period, and then it says, "It is disappointing to see parking."
Right.
Previous line says expansive parking, so I think this should say, "such a large expanse of parking," just to be clear. And I would move that correction to be made. I believe, I'm quite sure that's the way it was stated into the record by whoever, during our discussion.
Okay, is there any other corrections?
No, I move for approval, if Madam Chair I may, move for approval of 2008-049 with that correction.
We already have a motion.
I accept it as a friendly amendment, as I moved for it.
Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, and I am abstaining from the vote, so if the secretary will note, I am abstained.
Madam Chair, if the record could reflect, I'm also abstained. I did not sit on that case.
Okay, so do we still have five votes?
Yeah.
One, two, three? Yes, we do. Okay, so Mr. Earnhardt and myself abstain from that vote. Okay, that brings us to case E1, which, before we get started, is the petitioner here for case E1? That's the petition by, I'm not going to say the first name correctly. It's case number 2008-106. The petitioner's last name is Regarias. Is the petitioner or the representative present? It does not appear so, yet. I would suggest we proceed with the AWU cases, and maybe they will arrive. Is there a representative here from AWU? Okay, I'm going to step out of the room since I have been excused.
As we indicated earlier, we will be hearing these two AWU cases simultaneously, since there's a lot of common information that are contained in them. However, if there is public testimony, we will allow the proper amount of time on each case for the people to respond. So I guess we'll go ahead and start with a staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to apologize for being tardy. I'd like to note my presence and that I'd have no conflicts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beginning with case 2008-107, for a standby power generator in Eagle River, Eagle Glen subdivision, the west end of Davis Street. This, as you mentioned, the cases are very much similar. About the only thing they have that is different between them is the location. These are conditional uses for a utility station. In this case, though, it's not even quite that much of an application. The sanitary sewer lift stations for both of these cases are already in the ground and have been in place for years. What is being proposed in both of the cases is backup power generators, so that when main power is lost, the systems are not overwhelmed. Both systems are needed to pump sewage up against gravity, where it is then fed into a gravity system and proceeds on to a treatment station. For case 107, we had 128 public hearing notices mailed. Nothing was returned. We did have a couple of phone calls regarding the case, but there were no comments on it. Folks were just interested in a little bit more detail, and when they understood that what was being proposed was simply the addition of backup power, they had no comments on the case. On case 104, essentially the same thing, 99 public hearing notices. None of the items were returned. We had a couple of calls about that. Same thing. Once folks knew that it was nothing more than a backup power system for an existing station, they had no concerns about it. Both of these facilities are essential infrastructure. The lift station and backup power in case 107 serves residential neighborhood. The backup power system for case 104 serves a residential neighborhood and an elementary school. They are consistent with the comprehensive plan in both cases. Their respective comprehensive plans in both cases. There are conditions, a few conditions attached for each case. The only items I would point out are that for case 107, there is a park a short distance to the south of the lift station location. If you look at the black and white aerial photograph on page 2 for case 107, you'll see what's essentially an unnamed road. It's not much more than a right-of-way at this time, but it is, there is a pedestrian path that leads down to the park that will be used by the public. And then east to west, if you extend Davis Street to the west, there is a public path that leads down to Crested Butte Drive, runs right past the existing lift station. I point that out simply because the playground is obviously used by children and adults, and the pedestrian walk-through is used by people cutting through neighborhoods. So when the construction is underway, there will be extra care needed in fencing off and securing the area. Both the right-of-way section and the street maintenance sections of the municipality have said that the construction schedule does not conflict with anything that those divisions have planned for any of the streets in the area. Regarding case 104, at Beechcraft and 40th, again, it's the same idea. There is a school to the northeast. There are limited sidewalks and crosswalks in the area, so extra care will be need to fence off the construction when it is undergoing, when it is, at the time, it is ongoing, although AWU has commented that they plan to conduct the construction when school is not in session. So there should be a fairly minimal conflict in that case as well. The department recommends approval for both cases. The conditions for case 107 are on page 9 of the report, and for 104, the conditions are on pages 7 and 8 of the department report. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission for staff?
Yes, just one.
Okay. Actually, wait a minute. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, Mr. Barrett, is there any reason to be concerned that CRW prepared an explanatory letter regarding the right-of-way and one proposal and not the other?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Josephson, no. At the post-application meeting with the departments and the applicant, the right-of-way section had merely raised the question that right-of-way was involved in both of these cases, and why were easements not being used. On the one case, the explanation at the meeting, at the post-application meeting, was satisfactory, but the applicant felt that the other case just needed a little bit of additional explanation. Right-of-way had no objection.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, before we take public, or before the petitioner gets to speak on this, I just want to read the rules here. Persons wishing to testify will follow the following time limits. Petitioners have 10 minutes, and part of the time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, and so forth have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes. When testimony is completed, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. And also, an individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. So we'll go ahead and hear the petitioner here for these two cases from AWU. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Wendy Wilber. I'm a CIW engineer representing AWU, and we also have Matt Edge, the design engineer for the project. As was stated, these cases are very similar, and I'll do my best to keep them straight and not confuse you. I'll start with the Eagle River Lift Station first, and basically, we're looking at a four-by-eight generator, 32 square feet, about the size of this table. It's going to serve 200 homes. Essentially, if the power does go out, there's not enough AWU resources to go ahead and respond in a timely manner, and if it's not going uphill, there is a chance that that sewage will eventually back up into people's homes. So it really is a health and safety issue. The generator will be tested once every two weeks for a very short time during business hours. Sound levels with the sound attenuation on the generator should not exceed anything that isn't allowed within the neighborhood. Originally, the one on Eagle River was in the public right-of-way, and it has been since moved into a public-use easement. AWU was able to purchase the public-use easement from the property owner, and they did this in part to preserve that trail access to the park. And because of that, they were able to move the generator out of the right-of-way into the public-use easement and maintain the trail. There will be no fencing around the generator, again, in part to accommodate that trail. So for the 40th Avenue and Beechcraft, case 104, pretty much the same scenario. In this case, it serves 71 homes, Lakewood Elementary School, and 16 undeveloped lots. And again, can't reiterate this enough, if the power goes out and those lift stations aren't pumping the sewage uphill, it will back up into people's homes. There were some questions about the case 104 at Lakewood and Beech, at 40th and Beechcraft, going in the public right-of-way. There were some alternative sites looked at, but the control panel for the lift station is already within that right-of-way. In terms of cost and efficiency, maintenance, and operations, it really is beneficial to AWU to have them co-located. If it's across the street, they've got to run back and forth and test things, and they do want these operational. Also, if the generator goes across the street, it requires more underground infrastructure and more disruption to go ahead and make all those connections. And I think that's about all we have. It's a pretty simple case.
Any commission members have any questions for AWU on either case?
No questions at all.
Okay, you've got about 7 minutes and 18 seconds for rebuttal, so you may go ahead and take your seat right now and see if there's any testimony.
And thank you, and thank you for moving us up on the agenda, too. We appreciate that.
Okay, we'll now take public testimony on cases 2008-107 and 2008-104. Just indicate which case that you're testifying on, so we can keep it straight. So please state your name for the record, sir.
Hello, my name's Dan McConkey, Chair and Commissioners. This is last Friday, or last Monday, it was G5, G3. That is the 104, the Beechcraft 40th Streets. I'm not sure where I'm at anymore on this. I'm representing my wife in this case. She was here last week. There was quite a few of us here last week, actually. We just didn't make it through the business. Anyway, this proposal to put in this generator, I have a serious problem with. I sat in on many, many meetings of the rewrite of the Title 21. I don't see how this in any form follows Title 21, trying to beautify our city, trying to make our city more an agreeable place to live. When you look at page, when it shows the control panel, I'm not sure what page number that is, the existing control panel that she talked about, when my When my parents, or my father-in-law, I should say, own that property, were appraised that there was going to be something on that corner, they were told it was going to be a pole, much like the one you see to the left. They were surprised to see this gigantic panel affixed to the ground, that that was never sold to them back then. They were given a hundred dollars compensation to have this control panel put in. Now they came to them, and they wanted to put in a generator, and they offered them eighty-five hundred dollars. This generator literally buys the property. I mean, how can you have a decent family living there? And I like on this one page, they call out wetlands, twenty-three feet, and they're showing you a forest of birch trees. That's the property in question here. By annexation, they are taking away a right to a beautiful piece of property for a family to live on by putting a generator on its doorstep. When I find out that right across the street, this whole thing should have been located where the school is, it only makes sense. I don't care how much extra work it is to run some wires back over there. They're disrupting the future right-of-ways of these properties. Those nine lots are going to be affected. The future right-of-ways of infrastructure, the beautification of anchorage, the quality of life for any family living there is seriously impacted, and I can't. And then you have also, there is on page, my old book, I marked everything, my old one here, there was an engineer, this Jack Frost, right-of-way supervisor. He wrote a very good comment on why this thing should be over in the school parking lot. It is ridiculous to set this thing in a roadway, literally in the roadway as if it's a parked car. I can't go along with this, and I would seriously question the validity of the permits going back to the control panel. I think it's time to right a wrong. This whole thing needs to be moved to the other side of the street. Needs to be moved to the school that's going to meet the most demand for, is the school. I think these properties that are down the street, if they're not going to move this thing, then they need to seriously look at buying this so-called wetlands that they have a photograph of. Mature birch trees not grow on wetlands. Those little spruce trees are there because the birch are taking over.
Sir, if you could summarize, please.
Thank you. Question?
Do you wish to summarize?
I just, in summary, like I said, I was very involved in the rewrite of Title 21. I sat on many meetings, and I just cannot see how this follows Title 21. If I go to my property and decide to disconnect from the grid and want to put a generator in front of my house, I don't think you would allow it. I don't see how the city can get away with. The affected area that keeps showing the petition site is the center of an intersection. That's where the sump drains are. They're not showing the control panel and the generator location. Those are literally outside their box, as far as I can tell. So I don't think they've fully explained this petition site, just as if they, as they talk to my father-in-law, who's eighty-nine years old, and my mother-in-law, who's eighty, and they sell them these ideas, there's going to be a simple pole in the corner, it won't bother you at all. And then they come build these monstrosity things in front of the property. And we told our parents, or my father-in-law, we told them, do not allow them to do this. Talk to us first, and this is why we're here.
Okay, thanks. Are there any questions from the commission? Ms. Pease?
Yes, I'd like to follow up with the question of how would this impede access to nine lots or something? You made some-
Well, it wouldn't impede the access of the future infrastructure of underground utilities. I live in an old neighborhood on the lower hillside, and I've asked Chugatch and several utilities, when are we going to go underground? We're in an old neighborhood. And they said, basically, it's too difficult to put in old neighborhoods underground with all the problems from poor planning. We just are right now doing brand-new neighborhoods. So I doubt if I'll ever see the wires in my trees that go down with every windstorm being relocated. What I'm saying now is before we create another problem by putting this thing in the way of future, to either plant or wire these other lots with underground, I don't know. I have a real problem with putting a generator in a right-of-way on a corner of an intersection, like it's a parked car. And in the wintertime, we said, no idling. When you have a school parking lot, and even one of the own engineers said it would be a much better location to have it in the corner of the school parking lot. I don't understand why we'd want to put it in front of a residential lot. That's the part I don't understand.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Pease.
Yeah, thank you. Could we have the petitioner's representative explain, just clarify where it is in the right-of-way, because I was under the impression that it wasn't going to impede road use of the right-of-way.
Okay, well, I think it would be best if that question were answered now while we're still dealing with this case. So would the petitioner please come forward? And here, we're only talking about the question in regards to case 104.
Through the chair to answer, Commissioner Pease. The generator is located within the public use right-of-way, and we did evaluate whether the location of that generator there would impede future. There's no sidewalk there. We evaluated whether sidewalk would be possible in the future, and we worked with traffic, and they said it would not impede the road or any future sidewalk connections.
Thank you. And with regard to the question of the wetlands, would this be above ground? Would it involve any, if this is a wetland back there in the birch trees, would there be any effect on the site, or what's the footprint? Can you just-
No, as a matter of fact, the MOA Planning Department, Karen Kiesacker, went out, and they actually delineated the wetlands, and we are more than twenty-three feet outside of the wetlands. Oh, I guess, let me correct that. We're close to the wetlands, but we are not impacting them.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Pease?
No.
Okay, thank you. You may take your seats. Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to testify on either 2008, 104, or 107?
Yes, I would. My name's Andy Martin. This is for 104.
Thank you.
Does this work here? Can I place something?
Turn it on here just a minute. There we go. And please speak into the mic when you can hear you.
This is what the proposal is right here. This is the generator, and I think they have proposed an eight-foot fence, six feet with two feet of barbed wire on it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is what we received in the mail to show what was going to be built on that. These lots are a duplex lot. When divided, they'll be around six thousand square feet. Now, this will be placed in the front yard of one of the lots, half of the lot. As far as I can see, this is going to have a negative effect on that piece of land. I can't imagine building a, you know, attractive duplex with this generator and a six-foot fence built right in the front yard. I think it's going to affect where we can build, where the driveway can be built. I also think there's some safety concerns. I can't imagine kids playing in the front yard with this large fence and barbed wire. Any questions?
Any questions from the members of the commission? Okay, thank you, sir. Any further public testimony on cases 2008, 104, or 107? Okay, fine. AWU, you have opportunity to respond.
Thank you. I did want to respond with the fence, and the barbed wire on top is no longer part of the project. And since what was, since they received that package in the mail-out, the site has been greatly reduced, in part to fit it within the right-of-way and to minimize impacts to adjacent properties. And so there will be no fence, no barbed wire on top, and it really will be about the size of this table. Not much different than what you see for a Chugatch electric generator box, the big green box, only a little bit larger. And I guess the other thing I would add is, you know, when we did this project, we evaluated alternatives, and at Fortieth and Beechcraft, there's a nine-hundred-and-forty-gallon wetwell. If the power goes out, in order to adequately serve this residential area and the school, it would require a six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nineteen-gallon wetwell. You can imagine the cost and the private property impacts associated with that. So AWU really did look at what was the most technically and cost-effective.
Okay, Mr. Earnhardt?
It's been suggested that this be installed across the street at the school. Was that looked at, and why not?
I'll let Matt Edge speak to that, but primarily, it's a question of cost.
Hi, I'm Matt Edge. I'm a CROD engineering group. We did look at putting it in the school. Went so far as to talk to the school district about it. The problems with that are mostly additional construction cost, additional O&amp;M, operation and maintenance requirements, having this generator separated from the existing control panels and lift stations. The capital costs include quite a bit more conduit wiring, extension of a natural gas service from where it is now on the south side of the road, all the way across to the north side of the road to the school district property. And then there's several other items, including site security and other issues listed in the letter that, I believe, Mr. Josephson referred to it earlier. So we did look at it. The locating the generator close to the existing control panels is definitely the preferred alternative for a number of reasons.
Look, can you educate us a little bit more? I mean, you've got an existing control panel, but what I just got from what you said was it's just a matter of some conduit and some wire across the street is the additional cost. Why not, and why not move the whole control panel across the street and clean this up and integrate it into the school landscaping, which is generally more extensive than we'd have on private lots?
Well, the school, the school doesn't just say, we could put it anywhere. It's a very limited area where they felt that it might be, you know, acceptable. There definitely wouldn't be enough room in that area to put both the control panels and a generator. However, the area where it would be located is not directly visible from the control panels. There'd be a lot of either going back and forth between crossing the road and to coordinate, you know, maintenance on a regular basis, or having more than your standard crew size would need to go out there to coordinate, you know, turning the generator on and testing it to make sure that the lift station runs every time you shut the power down. Definitely, the overall scope of the operation maintenance actions at the facility would increase substantially. And conduit and wiring, I mean, it's not just a couple conduits. We also have to tear up a whole rest, you know, another section of the road, additional asphalt, concrete. We'd have to take the conduit and wiring onto school property for, I couldn't tell you the exact length, but for a substantial distance, which would require additional landscaping and a natural gas service. So all the items that we haven't shown are located in close proximity, and is definitely the least-cost alternative for us, and best from an O&amp;M standpoint. You know, you could also consider things like snow removal, where if you have the site, the items together, and you have the AWU, who has to go out there on a regular basis to keep the snow removed from the site, they go out to one site, remove the snow, as opposed to entering onto school property and plowing out a separate section. There's a number of items that are involved in maintaining separate sites for this facility.
I wasn't sure if I understood, because of the school district, you can't also move the control panel over there?
Well, the area that we discussed with the school district was very, was fairly small. I mean, we'd never necessarily discussed moving the control panels. That was never on the agenda with that, with our discussions with them. The site picked that, I do not believe, would effectively, has enough room to effectively have both the control panels and the generator. The control panel, there's new control panels installed that were recently installed in the last year, and they replace an existing control panel that's been in there since the lift station was put in there. And just for the SCADA panels that they have now, which, you know, I've talked to the operations systems at AWD, those are, new panels are a hundred thousand dollars. You can't just move the existing control panel because you've got to maintain operations of the existing lift station. So that's a brand-new entire control panel to be installed and then reconnected. So you're adding at least a hundred thousand dollars to the capital cost, just from that standpoint.
Are you saying you can't reuse the old control panel when you switch it over?
Not for the same lift station. They may be able to reuse it for a separate facility, but there are different, you know, electrical requirements, motor demands that, for each individual lift station, that have to be accommodated. So they're not just a, you know, plug-and-play type of a system. They definitely has some unique characteristics, so.
That's okay. Continue.
So they may be able to reuse it. If they've got another lift station somewhere else that's got a similar operating characteristics as this one, they may not be able to use it. It depends. They're all UL-listed, which means they have to be constructed with a, from a factory that has, you know, that's, can UL-list them, because underwriting laboratories list them. You can't just take components out and replace them with other items, so you can't customize it based on where you're going. The control panels are definitely something that opens up a whole realm of issues if you talk about moving those.
If we ignore the hundred thousand dollars for a new control panel, what are we talking about cost-wise to move the control panel across the way, assuming school district allows us to have the land?
I mean, I'd say a hundred thousand dollars is what the bid prices are for new control panels installed.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that includes labor and foundations, testing, and everything. So if they could not reuse the existing panels somewhere else, I mean, that would be the number that we'd be talking about, additional cost.
Of the hundred grand, how much is for-
The panel itself?
Panel itself, yeah.
I don't have numbers off. Yeah, I can't recall specifically what the materials versus labor breakdown is. So, you know, you could say maybe fifty to sixty percent of it is probably materials.
Thank you.
Ms. Pease?
My question had to do with the possibility of locating on the school site, which I think-
Okay. Mr. Josephson?
My turn?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I noticed, through the chair for the petitioner, I noticed that there was no recommendation related to using a siltation fence. I mean, there's comment, commentary from some division or department that this would have value. Is that something you agree with, that it would have value in terms of preventing encroachment, among other things?
Absolutely. It's, you know, part of your standard erosion protection plan. It's part of any Muni project. That the contractor who installs it has to submit and be approved. It would definitely be something that would be installed.
So if that was an additional recommendation and became part of the resolution in support, that would be all right?
It's already required, so.
I'm not sure that it's listed, but if it's required, that-
Well, it's required that they submit an erosion protection plan, and siltation fence is part of that plan.
Okay. Through the chair, my next question is, and I apologize if I missed this, the existing lift control station panel is going to be removed, or does it stay in place?
No, it would stay in place.
Okay, so this is to supplement that?
It would, yes.
And who is it that, if, again, I apologize if I missed this, but who owns this lot?
The corner lot?
Yes. The lot that is adjacent to the-
I don't recall specifically the owner. We did make contact with them early on.
It is a private property owner, and initially in the project, they were approached to obtain an easement on the property for this, and they did not want that easement, and so they looked at alternatives. But it is a private parcel, but the generator would be in public right-of-way.
Did they, through the chair, did they make some claim that even though it was in the right-of-way, that they suffered some economic impact by the proposal? Was there a discussion like that?
No, but my- No, but my understanding, and I did not talk to the gentleman directly, but my understanding was that they had plans to develop the parcels and didn't want a portion of it used up by an easement. You know, they would limit their, the easement would limit their capability for developing it. That was their opinion anyways.
So through the chairs, is it safe to say that this is sort of a first-in-time analysis in that what you're doing is helping existing homes, but perhaps to the detriment of future homes? Or is it not that simple?
Well, I think if you look at Title 21 and the comprehensive plan, supporting existing residential development is an acceptable conditional use. And this certainly supports existing residential development. Without this emergency backup generator, if there is a power outage, sewage will back into the existing homes. As part of that, that includes these 16-man developed lots. So this generator will benefit them as well when they're developed. If these houses develop and this generator is not there, then they will also have sewage backing up. So it will benefit the future residential development there as well.
Through the chair, is there some special assessment that is operative? Or is this just something that would inure to them? That is, the new potential developments? I mean, they're not going to get a tax. This is just something that all of us would pick up the tab for? Is that your understanding?
That is correct. The ratepayers would pick, the AWW ratepayers would all bear the burden of this infrastructure. And I think that's why AWWU looks at the most cost-effective approach as well.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, I will entertain a positive motion for approval of these cases. And we'll do them one at a time, so treat each one separately. Do 104 first and then 107 second. Okay, Mr. Earnhardt has moved for approval. Is there a second? Mr. Palmer has seconded it. Mr. Earnhardt, would you like to speak to the 104 case, please?
In case 2008-104, I move that we approve a conditional use under AMC 2150-020 to allow a utility substation to stand by a power generator for backup power to a sanitary sewer pump station in the R2A district pursuant to the conditions in the department packet on pages seven and eight.
Okay. And do you wish to speak in support of your motion or whatever?
I'm looking for input from other commissioners. I've got mixed feelings about this. It's very necessary. I think the backup generator should be put in. It's certainly to the benefit of the existing neighborhood and to the benefit of any new development in the area. However, it does strike me that it's not that expensive to move it across the street. And the school district can compromise on what land is available over there. It's clear by the aerial photographs and the diagrams, there's plenty of space to move it into a location where it does not interfere substantially with private property rights and can be actually far more screened by existing vegetation within the right-of-way than it will be at the current control location. With private development of these lots, what we're going to see is inside the right-of-way, two big steel things sitting there right next to the road, which not only are unsightly, but also do affect the use of the adjoining lot or lots. And with that, I'm listening to decide how to vote.
Any other requests to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Josephson.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, would the mover of the motion entertain a sixth recommendation as a friendly amendment that would require the petitioner resolve, seventh rather, resolve the need for a siltation erosion fence?
It's unnecessary, but I have no objection.
Okay, and the second, any objection? Okay, that's been accepted as a friendly amendment. That's what, a siltation erosion fence?
Yes.
Will be installed?
To resolve the need for.
Okay, to resolve the need for. Erosion fence with, with the building department?
With the planning department. Mr. Chairman, I have a question if I could. Both of the citizens who spoke, they spoke about 104, not 107, correct?
That's correct. Okay, Mr. Wang?
Well, I guess like Mr. Earnhardt, I have some misgivings about this. And I guess, you know, one thought is there is already some existing infrastructure, which already is impeding development in the corner of that lot. And so I'm not sure how much worse things are made by the addition of this infrastructure on top of what is already existing and appears to be existing by right. So, I mean, it's not clear to me that if they already have to develop around what is there on the corner, that the burden associated with developing around a similarly sized item isn't that much greater or the impacts aren't that much greater. I mean, the big picture solution would be to move both these things across the street to the school. And although AWWU didn't have a price quote on that, I think that would be significantly expensive. Even if you could reuse the existing control panel, it seems like just putting in the new control panel, soaking up that capital cost, moving the whole thing across the street would, I mean, I could easily imagine that going into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I guess, you know, the real problem may already have occurred, and I'm not sure that we're really making it worse by approving what's being proposed. And it certainly is an infrastructure benefit that's needed, whether it's here or across the street. So, I mean, I certainly wouldn't be inclined at this point to vote for moving this generator across the street unless we had more specific information from AWWU about the burdens associated with that.
Let's hold it. Hold it. Ready? Any further comments from the commission? Okay, well, I've got some rather strong opinion. Oh, Nancy, go ahead.
Well, I guess I don't think it enhances the visual quality of the street corner, but I do think that it's not egregiously or, I'm not, I'm not, I think that the, some of the testimony that we heard about it being, you know, a large facility surrounded by barbed wire has been countered by AWWU, who assured us that it will be about the size of this table before us, which looks to be about three feet by three feet by six feet. We have these green utility-type boxes on many street corners in Anchorage. They're certainly not aesthetic, but I'm not sure that I feel it's a great aesthetic impairment to the existing lot. I'm somewhat reassured, although we haven't heard the future traffic projections or traffic, street standards that will be needed on Beechcraft Drive, we've been assured that it's in the right-of-way where it won't impede future traffic. So I'm leaning toward thinking that it is not an asset to the property owners on this corner, but it is in the right-of-way. It does create quite a public benefit and inclined to support it.
Any further comments from the commission? Okay, I get to go last. I'm not going to be supporting this. And the reason for it is that I feel as though the city organizations have to set the example. And I feel as though this is something that, yes, we're going to have to pay a little more money or maybe a lot more money to get it done, but I think it sets the tone as to how we want this city to look in the future. And I would suggest that moving everything, to include the existing control panel and the proposed generator over onto the school property, which is in fact city-owned land, is the way to go. Because it just, it's, you know, aesthetically more pleasing and get it all together in one place and pay the price. So I will not be supporting this particular one. So since there's disagreement, we will go ahead and use our machines, not the buttons on the side, but your screen.
Ms. Peace?
One, two, three, four, five. I guess that passes, right? Here's five, eight, and then? Yep, that passes. Okay, let's move on to 107. Want to accept a positive motion? Okay, Mr. Earnhardt, you moved, do I have a second? Mr. Palmer, thank you.
In 2008-107, I approve, I move we approve a conditional use under AMC 2150-020 to allow a utility substation in an R1 district subject to the conditions in the staff packet at page nine. And I will be supporting the motion and don't have any further comments.
Ms. Peace?
That was from the previous case. I have one more question, but we've already voted.
All right, any other commissioners wish to make any comments? Is there any objection? That passes unanimously. All right, let's take about a short break here while we get Ms. Jones back in.
Okay. Now I'm going to see what the petitioners for the first case did. Okay. I would like to inquire whether the petitioners for case number 2008-106 are here. This is the case for? Gregarius, are you here? Okay. Well, now that you're here, we need to have the staff presentation first and then I'll call you up. You were up on the agenda a little bit earlier, but we went ahead since you weren't here yet. That's okay. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Forty-six public hearing notices were mailed for this rezoning case. We received one in support of the rezone, one in opposition to the rezone. No specifics given on either of the returned comments. This is a request to modify the existing special limitations on the two properties. In effect, this amounts to practically a housekeeping issue. The properties were first rezoned to I-1SL in 1992. In year 2000, another rezoning was approved by the planning commission and then the assembly to modify the special limitations. But that rezone was never made effective because the applicant failed to submit a letter accepting the special limitations at the time. So when the 120 days had expired, so did the rezoning approval. However, the applicant at that time did continue to develop the property in accordance with that rezoning approval, even though it was not in effect. It has come back now because as the applicant is or was attempting to close out the conditions of that rezoning, he discovered that the property had not been rezoned as he had thought it was. So we're back here with what is essentially what was approved in 2000. Some minor modifications regarding use, noise, landscaping, fencing, and so forth. The department does recommend approval of the rezoning. The properties all to the south are industrially zoned and in use as a warehouse or large equipment storage. The area is indicated in the Chugak Eagle River 2006 update as industrial. And the department conditions are located on page nine, 10, 11, and 12. It's a fairly lengthy list because most of it does involve permitted and prohibited uses. The important issues are on page 11. Stamp for page 11 of the staff report, which deals with all of the design requirements for the property, access, landscaping, screening, noise, and so forth. Madam Chair, that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there questions of staff?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Josephson?
Through the chair, Mr. Barrett, was there a sense in which there was some construction that occurred either, well, I guess after 2000, when the documents were not finalized with the department? That should not have occurred? In some technical definition?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Josephson, yes, that is essentially a correct statement. And that is the reason for the very first condition on page nine, that the existing building permit has to be closed out before the zoning will become effective. Because things were done more or less in accordance with what was approved back in 2000, but technically did not become legal because the zoning, the rezoning, never occurred.
All right, through the chair, why? The department called this sort of a housekeeping measure, but what's changed in the sense of there were these special limitations, which are restrictions, of course, in '92? They continued with some variations in 2000. They must have been important to some public policymaking body. Why aren't they important now? What's different?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Josephson, you're thinking that the words "housekeeping", generally "housekeeping" mean that they're not essentially important concerns? Or that?
No, through the chair, my understanding is that, for example, meat storage was allowed and that either the assembly- and that either the Assembly or a predecessor body of this one said that was all right. And now what we're saying is we're going to allow almost anything there. Because the list A through N is so expansive on page nine. It's actually A through Q, and then it goes on. I'm just wondering what the change is, why this is now okay.
The list of permitted uses was there in 2000 as well. But the intent of the applicant and the intent in that application and in this application are to make the meat storage and vehicle storage associated with it legal in the I-1 SL. I'm sorry, but I'm not familiar enough with the history from 2000 to really go through item by item and say what has changed. But it's... The use has not changed. I think that's what's important, and that's what's being made legal by this new list of SLs. In why is the list of permitted uses so lengthy if nothing else is being done? That I don't know. I'd have to ask the applicant to explain it. I was not party to all of the pre- and post-application meetings other than that I recall these uses were in the general lists in the 2000 rezone.
All right. I guess that, through the chair, that's the confusion for me, is that these are the things that would have been allowed had the 2000 paperwork been done properly.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Through the chair. One of the department's concerns is with potential uses that can result in dangerous effluent. And what's highlighted is the taxidermy and fur processing uses. There are lots of other uses, like photographic chemicals, laboratories for eyeglasses, paint in glass. Why weren't those things also listed under things that would require a permit? And I mean... And I'm hoping to avoid hearing, yes, but if they're required by permit, then that's covered. I mean, I don't know if it's covered or not. And I'm just wondering why we said we were concerned or why the department is concerned about taxidermy and fur processing, dressing of raw hides, effluent, but not these other dangerous things.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Josephson, I can't answer that. These are just the list of uses from I-1. And some have probably been added in from the various discussions regarding the SLs, but I'm afraid I don't know.
And finally, through the chair. It's your understanding, Mr. Barrett, that there's no... The petitioner doesn't want to change the use. And so theoretically, if there was a special limitation that didn't afford all these by-right uses, A through Q for commercial and A through G as industrial, that wouldn't immediately impact the petitioners, the way in which the petitioner uses the land?
My understanding is that's correct because the meat packing, the meat storage use is there, and that is the desired use. So there would not be an immediate impact otherwise.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there further questions of staff? If so, please indicate so. Apparently not. I will... Does your button not work? Okay. Mr. Palmer?
Madam Chair. I'm familiar with this area. There's a number of other industrial and commercial properties there. Can you run down what those are?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Palmer. From an aerial, I remember looking at them on CityView, the computer database. For the most part, they're warehousing. If I could ask Ms. Underwood to just pass this aerial down the line. I'll put a circle at the top around the two subject lots. And as you just proceed south down Springbrook, you'll see the... At least the outward appearance. It's warehousing of various types. And down towards the end, where we get to the intersection, it's what appears to be School Bus Depot. So it's generally various types of warehousing associated with light industrial uses.
Yeah, auto repair shops, that type thing. I believe there's a couple there as well.
All right, there may be. I don't recall.
So it is industrial, pretty much.
Oh, yes, sir, definitely.
This wouldn't be any exception to what's already there.
No, sir. The only real difference on this property is it is at the end of the I-1 row of properties. So it has more R surrounding it. But other than that, not at all.
Thank you.
Further questions? Apparently not. I will open the public hearing and invite the petitioner or its representative to come forward. You're allowed 10 minutes for your presentation. And if you would like to reserve some of that time for rebuttal, you may do so. Just let us know how much time you'd like to reserve, and we will do that for you.
Okay. No, it should be fairly short.
Okay. And could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Philip Farn, architect, and I'm representing Greg. I won't try and pronounce his last name. I would just masquerade it. We pretty much agree with what the planning board has said. I've tried to clean up part of the request through a letter, and we've addressed everyone but the cleaning up of the permits. The building department will not accept our drawings, any changes to them, until we have an ordinance. So I'm stuck between this ordinance and the cleanup of the permits. And we've met with the planning department. They recommended that we rewrite the ordinance since the O-2-1 was not in effect. The 99-1 was right. We didn't need it. So that's what we did with the planning department. I have only one section in the planning department's recommendation. It's on page eight, which has an effect clause which needs clarification from me. We cannot close our permits till the ordinance is accepted as the building department will not look at it, permits. So they want the permits cleared up before the ordinance is accepted. So I'm caught between two blocks, and I can't move unless I can get a letter from the planning department or somebody that directs the billing department to authorize me to finish the drawings to this base ordinance, which then can be closed out after I clean up the two outstanding permits. And that's basically the comments that I have. Although there are gentleman's comments as to why all these were listed. Before, it was listed specifically for heavy equipment. And we just tried to list it more specifically for equipment that would not make noise, and then we would not have to come back and do another special ordinance for some SL at a later time.
Okay. It looks like there are questions. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't quite understand your issue regarding the building permits and the ordinance change. Could you repeat that and explain that to me again?
Okay. To go in for a billing permit, the people at the department have to have an ordinance to go by that tells them what is acceptable in this S1 SL's special limitations. So if I don't have that ordinance, they won't even look at the drawings.
Where in this... In the conditions are you referring to that are an issue for you?
That's on page eight. It's section effect of clause. I believe it's subsection, first subsection A. There's two As, so it's the first one.
Page nine at the bottom in our packet.
Oh, you got a different page than what I had.
Well, we have a top number and a bottom number.
It's the first section right after the...
The first A.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Eishem has a question.
Yes. Now, again, referring to that A on page either eight or nine, whichever page number you're using. The effect... The I-1 SL zoning should not become effective until land use permit 05... Now, where is this land use permit 05E3072? Is that that old one that's never been implemented?
One of the old ones. There is two of them.
Right.
There's the 05E3072, and there's the 99E3260.
Okay.
I have to clean both of them out. And the original ordinance of 2084 was to clean up the 99 permit, but it never got followed through.
Okay.
So now we're trying to follow through, make everything clean. But since the old 2084 ordinance never got approved, never was established, and back to the 92 ordinance, which we know they closed meat, the requirements for that, because that's all heavy equipment.
Okay. So basically, then, if we approve this as it exists, this will allow you to close out 3072. Is that correct?
Right. I can close out both of them.
Okay. And then this then becomes, if approved by the Assembly, the new ordinance that guides you on what you can do in that application? Okay.
No. Then I said, you know, we cannot make it authorized until I close them out. So I can't close them out until I get an ordinance.
Yeah. It's chicken or the egg type things.
Yeah.
Okay. I hear one other...
I'll give a letter from somebody, maybe the building department or the planning department, to the building department saying, this is basically what's been approved. We need you to help and clean this up so we can finalize this. Summit House, bookkeeping or paperkeeping?
Okay. Now, if you look at the... Some of these old ordinances that never got implemented, there are some wordings in there that are included in the new one.
Right.
But there's a whole bunch of stuff under commercial uses and industrial uses that weren't listed in the old one. Now, did you dream those up or pull them out of somewhere? Or where did they come from? That's really my... Because obviously, you made an application for this. So where did those come from?
They are allowed in the S1 occupancy to begin with. But they're not under special limitations. So when we talked to the planning commission, they recommended, and we went along with it, we would add these specific things that we're going to allow and certain things we're not going to allow. So we're not listing the ones we're not allowing.
Okay.
Such as a roller rink or a music band stand or something that makes loud and noise. We kept the same sound rating that was required before. We kept the same landscaping that was required before. And we're just trying to make parts of the old one reapply to the new one.
So basically, you cherry picked these things out of the I-1...
Out of the S1, yeah. Now, there's many permitted uses... Listed in the S1, but we did not include them. So they cannot be included in this ordinance unless somebody comes along later and wants to rechange it.
Okay. Okay. I understand what you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Josephson?
Yes, through the chair for the petitioner. I'm just curious why you are here today. And what I mean by that is, I know why you're here to sort of get this done and make it official. But why weren't you here last year, the year before? Did someone come to you from the municipality and say, oh, there's a snafu, there's a problem, and question your by-right use?
Greg at Private Mike's Meats, which is the company, received a letter from the county on 212 requesting the completion of the permits. And there was another structure that was built without a permit. There were some other junk cars there. These were not to be allowed under the O-2 permit. So in looking at it, we got rid of all those. The extra building is gone. The junk cars are gone. The site is cleaned up where it should be. And everything on that letter that we had from the complaint is picked up except for these permits. And that's why we're here, is to get the permits cleaned up and everybody becomes happy.
And I apologize if I, through the chair, if I missed your discussion with Mr. Commissioner Eishem. But the so-called cherry picking of these things, why... Why, to your understanding, were these things that are on page nine permitted, recommended uses by the department rather than everything afforded under 214200?
Well, we're just trying to keep the noise down and keep the traffic down so that we don't impact the residential neighborhood.
Okay. I mean, it would be interesting, through the chair, to talk to the... This isn't land that you use, is it?
I don't use the land, no.
Yeah. I mean, it would be interesting to talk to the owner and find out what their plans are.
Owner's record, Greg.
You could state your name for the record for us, sir?
Greg Yanulis.
Okay.
What is your intended usage of the lot? You know, we've added all these extras in there. And what do you foresee doing with the land? Basically, you're going to remain...
I'm going to remain doing what we're doing now, warehouse, meat packing place. And until further notice, I don't know.
Okay.
He has no plans to sell the buildings. All we're doing is, if something ever happens to the business, then this type of sale could affect and they would not have to come back in and redo the special limitations again.
Thank you.
Mr. Frederick. And then Mr. Eishem. Mr. Frederick?
Thank you. Through the chair. In relation to this land use permit, 05E3072, is there anything that remains to be done? Does that relate to a warehouse structure?
It's a warehouse structure. We have to go through traffic reviews, zoning review.
Okay. But is the warehouse structure complete?
The warehouse structure is complete.
So it isn't a matter of building, completing construction, or anything like that? Really, what you need is the development services review of the plans, correct? Okay.
And we have to finish paying the fee.
All right. Of course.
There's still money owed.
Job without the fees, right?
So I mean...
So, okay.
But it's all part of the system.
All right. That answers my question. Thank you.
Could I speak to this for a minute?
Yes, you could respond.
Dan Jenke with Southport Construction. And I was the one that sold Greg these lots. And I was the one that originally had him zoned. And he wasn't aware at the moment that he had to follow up on his land use permits. And that's actually what happened. He never completed his land use. And what this was actually, the special limitations I had put on it was for heavy equipment parking, construction, building. And what he's doing is like nothing compared to this. It's basically a simple warehouse. And I don't know how they handpicked out of the code the stuff that he needs to do. But it mostly has to be good with the neighborhood. And that means lighting, noise, everything else. And so what we're doing is actually downsizing the special limitations dramatically. So no longer large equipment, trucks, dump trucks, anything like that. It's going to be just a warehouse with delivery trucks. And part of this problem is mine.
Thank you. Mr. Eishem?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah. Looking at 214200 under B on the permitted principal uses instructions, this is truly I-1 light because they've cut out things like fuel dealers, plant nurseries, automobile car washes, bus terminals, amusement arcades, funeral services, private clubs and lodges. All that stuff is authorized by right, and that's all gone. Most of the stuff that's in here is just stuff that kind of sits there
Most of the stuff that's in here is just stuff that kind of sits there and doesn't make any noise. So their special limitations have really limited to what can go in there, so, and that's what they got. I mean, they're straight out of 214200.
Okay.
And that's basically what we tried to do, is limit what could go in there in the future if it happens.
Thank you. Are there any further questions by commissioners? Apparently not. There are no further questions, so you folks can sit down, and after the remainder of the public testimony, you do have some rebuttal time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify in this case? Anyone else at all? Seeing and hearing no one, you do have some rebuttal time if there's anything further you would like to add in support of your petition. No, okay. Seeing and hearing that the petitioners don't wish to use your rebuttal time, I'll close the hearing and the matter rests with the commission. I'm looking for a mover. Mr. Eishem?
Madam Chair.
Seconded by Mr. Palmer.
Move to approve case number 2008-106 to redo I-1SL to I-1SL located at 12420 and 12406 Spring Brook Drive.
Okay, and this was seconded by Mr. Palmer. Would you care to speak to your motion?
Yes, ma'am. It appears that we have sort of some administrative confusion that we've got to straighten out here by getting something in front of the Assembly where they can get a ordinance so that we can close out some old land use permits that are in abeyance. And in addition, the I-1SL that he's, that has been proposed here is truly special limitations that have really limited what can go on in an I-1 zoning district. Basically, it appears that anything that makes noise or creates excessive sort of commercial traffic has been eliminated. And I'm very familiar with this part of town and Eagle River, and it's appropriate because it is surrounded basically to the north by residential, kind of up on the hill, and so that if you limit the noise and the noxious goings on, it would be a good thing for the neighbors in that area. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Mr. Eishem, did your motion include leaving in the effective clause?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Who, okay, Mr. Palmer and then Mr. Frederick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am also planning to support this motion, but I would like to ask staff, what recommendations would you have, if any, on paragraph A to address the problem that the petitioner mentioned?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Palmer, first I would note that this is not an unusual situation. We come across variances, conditional uses, rezonings, whatever, that somewhere in the past have open permits on them. The problem the applicant is having is that the building permit people, the permitting folks, are looking at plans that conform to the 2000 ordinance, yet when the permit folks look for an approved 2000 ordinance, they don't find one, so they go back to the 1992 one, and they say this does not comply. I would leave the condition as it is. We will talk to the building permit folks about this. Once the Assembly has approved the rezoning, the applicant will accept the special limitations, will take the approval to permitting, they will see that under this current application, the drawings will conform to the outstanding permits, they'll close out those permits, and then we will effectuate the change on the zoning map.
Okay. You have further comments, Mr. Palmer? Okay, Mr. Frederick?
I understand the intent of what Mr. Barrett just said, but the fact is that the I-1SL zoning will not become effective until the land use permit is closed out, and they won't close the permit out till the zoning's effective. So it, we're depending on the good nature and graciousness of the building department to do something that's specifically prohibited by the-
By the-
By the rezon.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Frederick, yes, it sounds like catch 22. It sounds like a circular argument that he has to do A before B, and he can't do B until he's done A, but it's not. When, we'll have 120 days after the Assembly has ruled on this to get a letter accepting the special limitations, walk that AO to the planning department, to the building department, have them compare the conditions in it with the drawings for those outstanding permits. They will say, yes, this does meet all of those requirements. They will then close out those two outstanding permits, and then we will simply change the zoning map. It's happened before. I mean, I can understand the concern for someone who's not been through it, saying, gosh, you know, I've got to get them to do it, and I have to hope that the building department will approve this and so forth, but the ordinance is, the ordinance will be written so that it will conform, so that those outstanding permits will conform to it, to the new ordinance, and it will get approved.
Yeah, I, Mr. Barrett, it's correct that they passed the ordinance, so it's on the books, but it just becomes effective once that permit's closed out. So staff can look at the ordinance on the books and close out the permit. Is that correct?
Correct, Madam Chair. Mr. Earnhardt's correct. The Assembly may approve the AO, but we really hold the power. Nothing happens till we change the zoning map. I'm being, I'm kidding. Of course, we're going to do that, but just because the Assembly has ruled on something doesn't mean it's all over. We then go through the plans, we go through the AO, we go through the conditions, we often end up talking with applicants again, and then we change the map, and the zoning is there.
Okay. Mr. Eishem?
I-
Were you finished? Or, okay, Mr. Eishem, and then Mr. Frederick, and then it's going to be my turn.
I wonder, Mr. Frederick, do you think we could put in some sort of wording that would make sure that this happened? I mean, that's what I'm wondering, if we need to put in some sort of magic words that says you'll hand carry it through the system once it's approved, or something like that?
I don't know. I'm willing to accept Mr. Barrett's personal assurance that this is going to work out.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Eishem, I am personally happy to volunteer Ms. Chambers to handwalk this through.
I'm going to tell her. Mr. Frederick, are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a concern that the Assembly does take action on this, the zoning map gets dutifully modified, and it's forwarded to the building department, and it sits, and the 120 days lapses. Where are we then? I do not want this petitioner held hostage because of some administrative snafu.
Madam Chair, I can understand the concern. The 120 days, of course, is for the applicant's benefit to review the special limitations and send us a letter. What cutoff date the building department might have on a 2005 permit, I'd have to go and look. I'll point that out to Ms. Chambers, that we don't want it to just end up sitting with permitting, but I would remind everyone present that it is the permitting department who brought this up, asking that these old permits get closed out. They are anxious to close the books on this and put it in the file cabinet, too. But certainly, I'll do everything I can with-
But we have no control over that department because they're beyond our jurisdiction.
Madam Chair, that's true, but other than their workload, I mean, they have no reason not to want to proceed with this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eishem?
Madam Chair, I might suggest that the petitioner, if he sees things getting clogged up and constipated, it would maybe be a good idea for him to request to come speak to us directly.
Put in an appearance-
Put in an appearance request and come see us if he's having problems.
I would highly recommend that.
Can we ask for 180 days now?
Madam Chair, the 120 is by code.
We don't have the authority to change that.
Yes.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Any objection? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Do we want to move forward with the AMATs case? We'll take a short break.
Thank you.
Really short break, then we'll move forward with the AMATs case.
It's the mint, purple. It's green, it's granite. He's trying to, you know, he's people, exactly, exactly. And I have, I have a life and, and it's-
Well, that's not-
Exactly, exactly. I will print off that.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to go back to work? Good. Happily, yes. We're going to make this a very early night.
He didn't.
Poor guy.
He's got to go through all of this stuff.
Okay. The next case on our agenda is officially E4. It's case number 2008-095. It, the petitioners and municipality of Anchorage, and the request is AMATs for the long-range transportation plan, and also an amendment to that, and also an amendment to the official streets and highways plan. As you'll recall, we had the hearing last week, and it was closed, and we had a question about whether or not the notice had been adequate with regard to handling both the long-range transportation plan and the amendment to the official streets and highways plan. I have reviewed the notices that were published, I've discussed it with Tom Nelson and at Lance Wilber, and they are constructively adequate. And they do mention, it does mention that we will be having a hearing on both, the long-range transportation plan and the official streets and highways- long-range transportation plan and the official streets and highways plan. So, we're going to be taking two separate actions. The first needs to be with regard to the amendments to the official streets and highways plan. Because whatever we do with regard to that, if anything, will impact our action with regard to the long-range transportation plan. Mr. Phelps, do you need any background documents? Because I have all of mine here.
I have the information I need. I do have a number of changes I want to make.
Okay. Then, Mr. Phelps is in the queue, and I'm going to recognize him as maker of a motion. And the first motion would be with regard to the official streets and highways plan. And in this, I need you to just clarify. This part of the action, we're acting as a planning and zoning commission because the official streets and highways plan amendments get adopted by ordinance. When we take action on the long-range transportation plan, we're acting as the citizen advisory committee to AMATS. Okay? So we'll be invisibly changing our hats. Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Let me ask a procedural question. It sounds like if there are changes to the document of the official streets and highways plan, that has to occur first before we make the motion to approve. Is that correct?
We need to make the changes, yes, there'd need to be a motion to amend the official streets and highways plan.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to amend the official streets and highways plan for Eagle River.
Okay.
Okay.
And I need a second. Mr. Eishem. No, you pushed the wrong button. Okay. Thank you.
I would like to make a number of changes to the text, and I would also like to explain the reasons for the changes as I go through. If you would turn to page 88, it's G at the bottom of the page of the long-range transportation plan. I have reviewed the street topology additions, and I find them to be appropriate for inclusion inside of the official streets and highways plan. When I was looking at them, they provide design guidance for the design of various types of roads. And the design guidance was not just in terms of engineering factors, it was also in terms of social, environmental, and other factors. Essentially, what's happening with the topology is it's opening up the design process to be more inclusive of other considerations when you design a road. And frankly, I think that's a good idea. So I recognize that the Eagle River Board has suggested to not include that, and there is a recommendation from the TAC to support that, but the changes I'm going to make are assuming that we're going to keep the street topology additions. And the reason for that has just been described. So here are the changes, okay? On page 88, you go to G, it begins the functional classification, go four lines down, beginning of the sentence, the supplement, and there's comma, describe this appendix C, because they don't define it, and it keeps on going. That's the change I have to that one there. The next change has to do with the continuation of the paragraph on the top part of page 89. Okay, now I have to read my writing. Okay, you go three, go three lines down, the street topology, okay? The street topology, insert, is to be considered in project development but is not intended to be prescriptive. Period. So I'll read it again. The street topology is to be considered in project development but is not intended to be prescriptive, restrictive. Not all elements will apply to every situation. And then the sentence continues, and we'll need to be.
We're changing the date.
Okay. I'll start again.
Okay.
Not all elements will apply in every situation, and the topology will need to be tailored with public input on a case-by-case basis to a specific road development project occurring within the Eagle River area. This topology may be revised in a forthcoming update of the long-range transportation plan and official streets and highways plan for the Eagle River-Chugiak area. And then, on classification changes in study areas, second line down, insert after the words last updated in 2003, by the way, you need a period after 2003. Insert, it is also intended that the OSHP serve as the basis for street classification and assignment of right-of-way width to roads in the Eagle River-Chugiak area. As such, it is to be used in subdivision design as well as a factor in other land use authorizations issued by the municipality. Period. Relative, okay, yeah, okay. Then new paragraph. Relative to the LRTP, comma, then it continues, study areas are indicated. So those are the changes I have for two. Now I have a change to the plan map, which I think is D, but I could be wrong. It's this document, it says, proposed 2007 official streets and highways plan. Change I want to make is to collector. And I want to divide collectors into two types. One type is going to be called existing, the other type is going to be called future. And the reason for that is because if you look at the classification, there is a discussion about the two types of collectors, and it says, existing streets, the right-of-way spanners will remain the same, generally 60 feet. And so, when you encounter an existing street, according to the text, it's 60 feet. If, however, it's a future road, it's 70 feet. So I want to change collector to have two subsets, if you will, a existing for 60 feet and a future for 70 feet. And those are my changes.
Are there any other proposed amendments to the official streets and highways plan document?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a technical change. You mentioned the Eagle River area. I think you might want to reinsert Chugiak Eagle River.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Madam Chairman, I just realized that, since we're talking about the long-range transportation plan, the staff recommendations that are found on, I believe it's page three of the briefing memo, are also meant to be included as well, too. So there's three staff recommendations that would change the text inside the OSHP, and my motion would include those three recommend, three recommendation changes.
Now, is this the memo that was in our packet?
Yep, that's the one.
Not the one that we received today?
Well, it's the one I received today.
Except one has some underlining on it.
Yeah, the one that's underlined is the stuff that's new, and I concur with the staff recommendations, I wish to include them in the changes I wish to propose for the OSHP for this area.
Okay. So we're incorporating the items in the staff memo?
Yes.
Okay. Do you concur, Mr. Eishem?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Now, Madam Chairman, now that we've described the changes to the OSHP, I want to go back to the main motions again now that I have to make, we have to make in order to adopt this. And so, the main motion I have is, the Planning Commission recommends the adoption of the Eagle River-Chugiak OSHP official streets and highways plan to the Assembly as an element of the comprehensive plan and as an adoption as an element of the LRTP for the Eagle River-Chugiak area. Subject to the changes identified, subject to the changes made as part of this motion. Further, the Planning Commission recommends the adoption of the OSHP as an element of the long-range transportation plan for the Eagle River-Chugiak area. Period.
Okay, Mr. Eishem, do you concur with that?
I concur.
Okay. Are there, were there any other amendments to the official streets and highways plan Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I plan to support this motion. However, I'd like to get assurances from staff that, given the fact that Eagle River will have its own Title 21, hopefully very soon, and that you are planning to do a revision to the LLRP, I think, in 2011, that this transportation plan will be part of that bigger process and will not be standalone or in conflict with any of those pieces.
Through the chair, could you please explain your question?
Well, given that we just are going to act on the, as I understand it, the OSHP for Chugiak Eagle River, and the objection of the road board was, we want to wait till the rewrite of Title 21 to do that. Is that correct?
For the street topology portion.
Right. That, in your memo, you're intending to revisit that in 2011? Is that correct?
Yes, we're beginning it next year.
That's correct. So, what you're telling me is that that will, could be in concert with the Title 21 development for the Chugiak Eagle River area?
Yes, I'm not sure.
It won't be in conflict.
Well, no, it won't be in conflict, but I'm not sure if it's actually the road board, I'm not exactly certain who is going to be doing that, if it's the road board's responsibility or if we're, but it will be. But I do have a question about Mr. Phelps', Commissioner Phelps's wanting to put 60-foot right-of-way on the map for existing roads. It is in Title 21 right now that collector, it is, it is by ordinance that collectors in Eagle River and Chugiak are 1B, which is minimum 70-foot right-of-way.
No, we're actually amending the OSHP and establishing right-of-way standards by this action.
So this would, this action, if adopted by the Assembly, would change that?
I like the idea, I'm just not sure, because we didn't get that in-depth review by the road board.
Okay. Well, we've had testimony for the, that there's a desire for the smaller roads.
And I think to add, too, that, the reason I picked up on this is because in your second paragraph under classification changes, you say, the right-of-way spanners will remain the same, for generally 60 feet and 25 miles per hour, respectively.
It does say that. It does.
It does say that.
The OSHP.
So, this would be the time to make that consistent. And this is the appropriate place to make a recommendation for an ordinance change. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Now, we put on our hats as citizen advisory committee to AMATS. Mr. Phelps?
I guess.
On the long-range transportation plan.
I thought I'd made that motion, but that's fine.
No, we just dealt with the official streets and highways plan.
Okay. The Planning Commission recommends the adoption of the Eagle River-Chugiak OSHP as an element of the long-range transportation plan, and recommends its adoption to the AMATS Policy Committee through the Technical Advisory Committee.
Are you recognizing, we need just a motion on the long-range transportation plan?
Are you saying that we're taking action on the long-range transportation plan, not the OSHP?
With the, and incorporating the action we just took with regard to the OSHP.
But it's not set up that way. It says, recommend adoption of the OSHP. I really thought we were taking care of the OSHP, but we're taking, we're actually doing the long-range transportation plan, too?
I think so. Isn't that correct?
Whoa.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yes, we're doing two. That's.
Okay.
The act's the last.
I, I thought we're doing the OSHP. Well, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, I changed my motion, then. The Planning Commission recommends the adoption of a long-range, Eagle River-Chugiak long-range transportation plan, comma, which includes the OSHP, comma, to the Policy Committee of AMATS for its adoption as an element of the long-range transportation plan.
Okay, I need a second. And thank you, Mr. Eishem. And the OSHP changes that you're including are the ones that were.
Yes.
Just taken by the commission.
Yes, that is what I recommend.
That is correct. Okay, would you care to discuss your motion?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Actually, my motion was really targeted toward the OSHP, but it really is including the LRTP, right?
Your motion is for the LRTP now, we're the citizen advisory committee to AMATS. And it's not an ordinance, we're making recommendations on the long-range transportation plan.
Right. All right. The long-range transportation plan is the principal planning document for transportation improvements in the Eagle River-Chugiak area. This plan has been through an elaborate transportation planning process, which includes technical analysis and public review, as well as review by technical bodies such as the Technical Advisory Committee. The plan seems to properly deal with the relationship between land use and transportation improvements, and identifies a rational set of recommendations for roadway and related development inside the Eagle River-Chugiak areas. The OSHP, which is an element or a component part of the long-range transportation plan, has also been found to be consistent with the long-range transportation plan and is supportive and implements the long-range transportation plan. For the reasons that I have noted, I will support my motion. I should note that the motion does include the continuation or the inclusion of the two appendices, one of which was not recommended for inclusion by the Technical Advisory Committee, I believe that's appendix C. The reason that my motion includes the topology is because, on my review of that topology, it actually provides good guidance to the design process and provides flexibility that otherwise would not be there. And I think that design flexibility is important. Particularly, it's important for the projects in this area that need to be tailored to the specific conditions of Eagle River and Chugiak, which is frankly a different geographic area, with different needs than the Anchorage Bowl. For all these reasons, I would support this motion.
Is there further discussion? Or any changes? Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you, Ms. Underwood, for your diligence and all the hard work you have done on this, responding to our questions and providing us with extra materials. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Before we move on to the last item on our agenda, certainly not the least, I want to just deviate from our regular agenda for a minute and introduce our newest commission member, who's in the audience. Mr. John Weddleton, would you please come forward so I can introduce you? Mr. Weddleton will be taking Mr. Palmer's place. Mr. Palmer, this is his last meeting with us this evening. We're going to miss him a lot. And Mr. Weddleton will be joining us at our first meeting in September. And we welcome you, and feel free to call upon me or any of the other commissioners between now and then if there's any way we can help you get oriented to the group, and we'll be ready to and excited to have you join us and help carry part of the bucket of water.
Thanks, I'm looking forward to it. And thanks for serving, too. Have fun with your play for the next few years, I guess.
Yeah, he serves diligently for us. Well, we look forward to having you as part of the group, John.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, we are at the. Well, we are at the big part of our agenda for tonight, which is the Title 21 rewrite. And our public hearing on this is closed. And we are now down, I believe, to our deliberation time. And this is Chapter 7, and we're doing this in three parts. Is that correct, Ms. McConnell? And so at this time, if you could give us just a brief overview of where we're at tonight and what are, and our task?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Chapter 7 is quite large, and we felt that it would be most easily handled by separating it into three different parts. So we tried to divide it logically, or at least as logically as possible. The title of the chapter is Development and Design Standards, and some of these development and design standards carry forward or modify existing standards, and other sections are completely new and incorporate standards that we don't have in today's code. The section, Section 1, that we'll be talking about tonight includes Sections 010 through 050, and then jumps to pick up the last section. So it's the general provisions, the natural resource protection, private open space, drainage, stormwater treatment, erosion control, and prohibited discharges, utility distribution facilities, and operational standards. What you will be seeing, your second meeting in September, I believe September 15th, will be the middle section, which is a lot of the site, additional site development standards such as transportation and connectivity, neighborhood protection, landscaping, and parking, and lighting. And then at the, in Part 3, which we intend to have for you in October, you'll be addressing the building design standards, residential, public, institutional, and commercial, and large commercial establishments.
Does the Commission have any questions before we get started? Apparently not. Oh, Mr. Phelps.
I don't have a question of staff, I'm sorry.
Okay. I would suggest that we go into the Committee of the Whole and function that way, and then I'll recognize folks that are in the queue.
Madam, move to, move as in Committee of the Whole?
I'm going to oppose that, I need to explain why though.
Okay, you're welcome to oppose it.
I.
Well, just let's see if there's a second for that motion. Was there a second for the motion to go into the Committee of the Whole? Yes, Mr. Palmer. We have objections, so we need to vote on whether to go into the Committee of the Whole.
Madam Chair, I'd like to hear the objection of the.
Okay, you can speak to your objection.
I believe I.
Is it your objection?
Yeah, yeah. There was a missed delivery of my packet. It was supposed to arrive last Friday, and I didn't get it until Monday. And I only had the opportunity of beginning to look at this substantively at 5:00 this evening. And my review was primarily of the issue response summary, and there are relatively few changes I had with that. But then I began going through the title itself, and what I found is a lot of changes that I would propose to make, and frankly, they're sufficiently substantive, and enough of them, it probably is not advisable to do it this evening. It'd probably be more advisable to identify what the issues are to staff so they can respond to them, similar to the way that we did it in the previous section of the title where we had this situation before. The alternative is to go through all of these changes this evening, but I don't think that's going to be a good use of our time. I should say that the changes that I'm concerned about are not really substantive in the sense of changing the thrust of where the code is going, it's more in terms of wording and interpretation and proper definition and the like.
Okay, Mr. Josephson?
Well, I guess I want to make sure that I received delivery of everything I'm supposed to have this evening. Could I ask my fellow commissioners what it is they have that is new, other than the issue response summary? Because that's all the new material I've gotten on this. Am I missing something else?
I think that's all the new material. Okay, Ms. McConnell?
Madam Chair, the issue response is the only new material. We also offered to provide copies of Chapter 7 for commissioners who couldn't find theirs or.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, and it sounds like there is objection to functioning as a Committee of the Whole, so perhaps you'd like to withdraw that, Mr. Eishem? Or do you want to move forward with it?
Well, it seems to me that we could deal with Mr. Phelps' concerns as a Committee of the Whole also.
If other people had concerns, they could address them as well.
Right, and it seems to me that's an easier way to.
Than doing it formally.
Doing it formally.
Okay. Is there objection into going into the Committee of the Whole? Okay, then please use your voting machines.
That's what shows.
Okay, that motion passes with Mr. Phelps objecting. Okay, we are now functioning as a Committee of the Whole. Ms. Pease?
Yes, I am sensitive to the concerns of Mr. Phelps to try to make efficient use of our time. I have probably, he said he had very few comments or concerns with the issue response. I marked about one-third of the questions that I thought differently from the staff on, I guess, and, you know, had wanted to see what the, you know, whether the Commission wanted to go with the staff's response or not. So he says he has some very substantive concerns that maybe weren't on the issue response, so I'm just trying to figure out how to be efficient about this. In terms of having staff respond in another round, I don't know what that does to their schedule. In my case, some of them I just disagree with staff, so I can tell them the approximately one-third, and some of those, they're just going to say, well, we disagree. So, you know, the Commission would want, I'd want to bring it to the Commission anyway.
Well, you know, maybe the way to do it is to go through, and since we tend to disagree with less items than we agree with, is identify those things we disagree with, and then if everybody agrees, that gets approved, and then we talk about what we disagree with, and then we add Mr. Phelps' concerns to, that we need additional answers to. And then we deal with those, you know, as they come back to us in regards to what Mr. Phelps has. But if we, if we're okay with two-thirds of these, why not approve two-thirds of them, or whatever the number is?
I think we've done that before.
Yeah, that's kind of the approach we've taken.
The, I guess, the complexity in that is if we approve two-thirds of the language, and then some of Mr. Phelps's concerns are within that two-thirds that we just approved, then we have to come back and undo our work.
Madam Chair, I would recommend we just stay in the Committee of the Whole, so if we agree on something, a person could revisit that issue at your next meeting without having to reconsider it, since you're in a committee meeting.
Well, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Josephson?
I, my only concern would be with what Commissioner Eishem said about moving forward on whatever percentage isn't in contention. And the reason I say that is, frankly, I need more time to study this document. I suspect I've had it for four or five days. It may have been middle of last week, but just because of my own work schedule, working Sunday, sponsoring a race all Saturday, I haven't had sufficient time. And I would rather, if it comes to it, and I can submit a motion at the time, or make a motion at the time, to postpone any final dispositive vote on any subsection. But just so commissioners know my position on it.
Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate that I didn't get this information until 5:00 this evening effectively. It's not really fair, from my perspective, to be forced to go through all this this evening. This is a very large packet, and it's a lot of stuff that we have to go through. The other part I'm concerned about is that I've identified needed areas of change, but frankly, they're going to involve some discussion with staff, and I don't have final language. I have some language, but I'm not going to say it's artful yet, because I got to work it a bit. And if we proceed this evening, there's going to be a lot of things we're going to be talking about that may not be really, really need discussion at all, and I'm going to have to go through a lot of tailoring of the language, and frankly, I'm not sure that I have all the language in place right now.
Okay, Ms. Pease? Were you back in the queue? Okay, Mr. Palmer?
Madam Chair, I guess, given that this is likely to hold over, and that the new Commissioner will be picking up in the middle of this conversation, I guess somewhat selfishly, but also I think for the benefit of the discussion, that that person be here for the beginning as well as, instead of coming in the middle. So I would be supportive of a postponement at this point.
Okay. Mr. Eishem?
I'm just wondering if Commissioner Phelps, if we could get your input so staff could start answering those questions this evening, and then maybe put everything else off, or are you in such?
I don't think he's ready.
Well, if you're not ready, that's all, if you're not ready.
Well, the thing is that, I see, I'm ready and I'm not ready to really answer that question, is that I've identified all the areas of concern, but, you know, probably some of those areas of concern are not going to be substantive, and the staff can answer that, but it takes a discussion to do so. The other part is that it's going to be difficult to work out the actual language this evening. Maybe I didn't answer your question.
Right, I, just from what I'm hearing, I think it sounds like a postponement's in order. I think we're not utilizing our time well, sitting here, you know, this is one of those things, times when it sounds like we're trying to make sausage. Even trying to, because I think, I'm afraid if we go through and identify some things that we agree with, that if Mr. Phelps has changes to some of those, we're going to be revisiting a lot of things we've approved again. And also, since we're going to have a new Commissioner, I really think postponement might be in order. Mr. Earnhardt?
I just wanted to say, I think a postponement probably is in order, because I have no interest of trying to work through this tonight with people who are unprepared, but, you know, I'm new to the Commission. On the Title 21 rewrite, I'm coming in in the middle of the process, and if I ever had the Article 7 rewrite, I never had in my possession until I looked it up on the web on Friday. And I think it behooves us all to, you know, watch our email, see what's coming up on cases. And, I mean, I am tremendously busy at work, but I burn the midnight oil to get prepared on this. And it's always bugged me, on other Commissions as well, you know, part of our duty to the public is to move things forward and be prepared. And I'm just voicing my frustration.
Well, I think for the most part, people on this Commission do work hard to be prepared, but if you don't get the documents in time to review them, and oftentimes, we get amendments and addendums by email the day of the hearing, and many people don't have access to their email till they get home. It makes it kind of hard. Mr. Eishem?
Madam Chair, I'm willing to go ahead and make a motion that we go out of.
The Committee of the Whole.
Committee of the Whole, and then I'll be glad to make a motion that we postpone this thing. But at least we were able to talk freely.
Yes, and so let's, thank you, Mr. Frederick, for seconding that. Any objection to coming out of the Committee of the Whole? I see none. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we postpone the decision on this August 11 memorandum that we received, which is a portion of Chapter 2107, until the next scheduled meeting, and that.
Probably will have to be the second one in September. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're certainly sensitive to the fact that these materials were delivered to you, or in Mr. Phelps' case, not delivered to you rather late, and it's definitely our intent in the future to get these issue response documents to you more ahead of time. That said, there is an urgency in retaining, not that I'm urging you to act tonight, but there is an urgency in retaining the Title 21 schedule, as there are many other items that are coming before you throughout the fall and the winter. So I would ask you to consider a special meeting. I know that these chambers are reserved for potential use next Monday night. I'm not sure about the Monday following, but I would urge you to consider not place, not leaving this for a whole month, as that would be the time when we'd be asking you to look at the second section. And let me add, we're happy to work with Mr. Phelps on, you know, his proposed language.
Mr. Phelps is already in the queue. Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, I'm sensitive to staff's interest in this too, and my intent was not really to postpone this thing in, you know, for a long period of time. I have language here, but, or, and I think I can go through it quickly with staff, and so my intent would be to work with staff, like, within the next seven days and probably work it out. I don't think it's going to take that long, but it's going to take like about two to three-hour discussion with them. I'm willing to do that in the next seven days.
So that would be the 25th?
Yeah. I can do it by then.
18th? 18th.
Next week is the 18th, the following week is the 25th.
Yes, we have that, we have that day, I think, reserved.
Is this tentative meeting no longer even tentative?
I think we're heading that direction.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have no problem with a date, I just arbitrarily pick the next meeting. If we want to have another meeting this month, and it fits in with everybody's schedule, that's fine with me. The sooner the better, I think.
I think the sooner the better. Is there, is there any objection to the next Monday night, the 18th, to do this?
Well, I don't have any, but Ms. McConnell said this facility was being occupied.
By us, we have it reserved.
Oh, I see, that's what I was saying. Okay. No, I don't have any objection.
Okay. Mr. Eishem, you have the floor, but I, you want to reserve it for that, or postpone to that date?
Well, I think, Mr. Phelps, do you feel as though you'll be ready to go by meeting with the staff, and we can deal with it on the 18th?
Well, if staff and I get together tomorrow.
Well, I mean, is that.
Because you're going to have to back up for, you know, preparation of this, getting it out and everything else, that's a really tight timeframe for something like this. I can certainly try.
I mean, we just don't want to, if I make this motion, we don't want to have to go through this exercise again, I guess that's, you know, that's the thing.
Otherwise, it's probably going to be the second meeting in September, because I don't know what our first meeting in September is like.
If I, I'll commit to working this week with staff, because I really don't want to hold this thing up. I just don't want to do it this evening, and I think putting it to the second meeting in September is just too far away. I would agree with staff on that.
Okay, Madam Chair, then I move to postpone consideration of this August 11 memorandum until the 18th, which is a week from now.
Okay, I need a second. Mr. Frederick did, and now I have some people in the queue, and I don't know if you still want to speak. Mr. Palmer? No. Ms. Pease?
Yes, I had the 18th on my calendar, so that's fine with me as far as attending. I will be gone between then, now and then, so I won't be able to submit electronically any of my list of questions until Monday. As I said, some of them, I think there's just a disagreement, but there were a couple that I had questions on, what is the national standard, or what was the original language in the 2004 draft, because I wanted the Commission to take a look at that. So I'm a little bit at a disadvantage, I don't want to hold it up. I guess what might happen is some of mine might result in hold. I guess what might happen is, some of mine might result in holds, but we could at least bring them up and discuss them.
Okay.
If that's okay, I'll be a little disadvantaged compared to Mr. Phelps, but I think that's okay.
Is there any objection to postponing until next Monday, the 18th? Apparently not. That item is postponed. Ms. McConnell? I would request that you get copies of everything to do with Chapter 2107, including the economic impact documents, all of them, and the, you know, all the background materials, to Mr. Weddleton. Because, so he can follow along with what we're doing, and then he will be involved in the next two iterations of this. And he really needs to get those, so he can get up to speed.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I don't see anything else on our agenda for this evening. Before we adjourn, I want to thank Mr. Palmer very much for your service on the Commission. You have been a tremendous resource for us, and we're going to miss your expertise and input. Whenever you're absent, there's a big hole. And it's, we notice the difference. And so, Mr. Weddleton has got some pretty big shoes to fill. And I know he's going to hit the floor running, but you've definitely provided some tremendous input for us and service. And we're going to miss you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm not sure all those kind words are deserved, but thank you, anyway. I know before I came on the Commission, I didn't quite understand all the work that's done here. And the amount of work and the good judgment that's shown by you all is amazing. And I congratulate you for that. But, and be assured, I'll be thanking you fondly when I'm in Europe, drinking beer and drinking wine.
Every Monday night, you know, a moment of silence at 6:30 for us. Well, thanks so much. Yes, Ms. Pease?
Yes, Madam Chair. I already mentioned to Commissioner Eishem, but I'll do it on the record, that I would like to spread notice of reconsideration on the lift station on Beechcraft. And hopefully, we could deal with that next time. And I guess I'll just go ahead so that I get it all out. The reason for that is, I had punched my button before the vote was taken. I wanted to find out for the record what the cost would be of relocating that utility, the generator and the panel to the school. And I think that we questioned them a little bit, or Commissioner Earnhardt did, but they kind of skated around the issue. And that, I did want to use that information in making my decision, and I didn't have that information. So I would like to request that that information be provided to the Commission as part of the reconsideration.
The, any Commissioners have any comment? Oh, Mr. Wang?
But I guess, I have no objection to getting that information. And I guess I'd also like to know if there's a significant cost associated with it. Does that mean that this project will or won't be built because of the cost? I mean, in addition to what would it cost, what does that do to the timeframe? And expectancy that this improvement will actually occur? So that's another piece of information I'd like to have.
Mr. Eishem?
Madam Chair, I would also recommend that we make the decision on whether we want to reconsider at the next meeting, once they gather the data, rather than voting on whether we will reconsider it tonight. So I'm not going to make the motion that we reconsider.
Okay, any other comments from Commissioners?
Madam Chair, is it possible to have the vote whether to reconsider tonight, so that we can vote at the next meeting?
Generally not. We usually spread notice of reconsideration on the minutes. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
There's, aha, and it looks like Mr. Earnhardt seconded. Is there any objection? No objection. We're going home.